Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We'll get started. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America to the Republic of America's citizens on this under God, in his as well, for the sake of our.
And Missoula County acknowledges that this event in the Sophie Moise Room takes place in the Aboriginal territories of Salish and Kalispel people. Any public comments or public announcements or public comments not on the agenda? Okay, our current claims list received as of August 3rd, 2022 to August 17th by the Commissioner's Office totals $4,727,679.56. We have one, two, three, four, five proposed hearings. And we're not sure if Andrew Chorney is coming in person or is he on line? Or maybe?
I just asked Kyla to see if she can track him down, so.
Okay. Ooh, and there's nothing we can do without him, it looks like. Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, while we are stalling for time here, for folks who don't know, earlier this week on Monday and Tuesday, Missoula County and 17 other counties across Montana hosted the Greater Northwest Passenger Rail Summit in Billings, Montana. And very shortly, the folks were not able to participate, the recordings for that event should all be available and you can view all of those sessions at your leisure. There's a lot of good material there. There we go.
He will be here shortly, is what Kyla just said.
Well, at this event, if that has not piqued your interest enough already, some of the things that folks might want to tune in for in some of those sessions include hearing a keynote address from the Administrator of the Federal Railroad Administration who made the trek out to Billings, Montana. We also had a special appearance, virtual appearance of the President and CEO of Ukrainian Railways to talk about what they have done in their Herculean effort to keep the trains running in Ukraine while at war with Russia, and many other things that folks would be interested in.
rather wait for Andrew?
We could go through the RSIDs if you would like to do that. I could take care of those pieces.
Sure.
Sounds like a great idea.
All right, I believe Violet has my presentation.
One second.
All right. Perfect. So what we're asking today is for a final hearing of the Rural Special Improvement Districts and asking you to sign the resolution that was attached with the meeting, agenda and materials. So if you could go to the next slide. For our Rural Special Improvement Districts, we have 35 street lighting districts, four water and sewer maintenance districts, six parks and common area districts, and 11 debt service districts that are paying off prior infrastructure improvements. Just as an overview of what we covered at the initial hearing on August 11th, there are three districts with assessments that are proposed to be increased in total, and one of those is newly assessed. The first is RSID 904, which is Canyon New Park. We're asking to increase the assessment an average of $10.75 per property. That particular RSID is assessed based on the assessed value of the property, so that average may vary depending on the value of the property in the district. The total increase for the district is $1,000, and that's the first increase that has happened for that district since 2013. In RSID 923, Elmore Park, we're asking for an increased assessment of $8.48 annually. The assessment in total for the year for the property would be $131.58. Overall, for the district, the increase would be $2,000. In this particular district, everyone pays the same amount, so that $131.58 is what every property owner would pay. RSID 505, which is the 29th and North Avenue West paving, is a new district and has a new assessment. There was a significant road project out there, and that is underway, is my understanding. And to finance a portion of that, homeowners asked us to put in place an RSID. So the assessment to pay off that debt service for each property owner will be $322 annually. That's paid in two payments with property taxes, and the end of November and the end of May. None of the other Rural Special Improvement Districts' total assessments will increase in fiscal year 2023. Like I mentioned, for each of the assessments, you know, some are fixed and some have slightly variable. You can find more information about each district online at missoulacounty.us. Under our Financial Services page, we have a page dedicated to our special districts. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Amanda. We only have three, four people in here. Does anyone have any comments or questions in the room? Okay, and don't see anyone online.
Josh or Dave?
I'm pretty good. I just want to note these are really modest increases that bring these districts up to date. I do want to highlight the new district and that this came to be because neighbors reached out and wanted to know how they could get this paving and road maintenance done. And it's about to happen. I want to give Shane Stack and John Hart a pat on the back for shepherding this thing along. It's been a long process, and it's real glad to see you cross the finish line, the 29th and North.
Agreed.
Thanks, Josh. I would say it's paved, and on Monday they're going to kind of do a little bit of cleanup work and should be all finished up next week.
Fantastic.
Well done. All right.
Thank you. We'll go on to fairgrounds.
What's our, is our process just to?
Do we do them all at once?
Pronounce this open or what?
Do we adopt next week? Or not next week, but first week of September with the final budget?
Actually, I'm seeing you to adopt.
We could adopt this RSID right now.
Yes, please. That would be ideal. Our RSID reporting requirements are a little earlier than the rest of the county budget, so if you could approve these today, if you wish, that would be fantastic.
Okay, and would you rather us do these all at once or should we be doing these one at a time?
I.
With RSID, we got to do it all by itself.
Probably if we want to be very technical, doing each one by itself is probably the best.
Yeah, but I knew it as soon as I said it. That was kind of dumb. Sorry. I would move that we adopt the Rural Special Improvement Districts budget.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks for all your hard work, Amanda.
Andrew just kept running in. There's a cloud of dust behind him, but maybe we'll finish these next two and then?
The dust was actually a cloud of $1 bills.
I could go ahead and finish these up so Andrew could get settled and get his presentation. Let's do it. The Fairgrounds Special District, if we could go to the next slide. So the Fairgrounds Phase 1 renovation proposed assessment is $844,272. And this is for all of the improvements to the historical buildings and all of kind of the new shiny things on that side of the Fairgrounds. Also, we're asking for a proposed assessment of $817,712 for the debt service for the Rock Mountain Gardens Exploration Center, which is under construction. Both of these assessments are paying the debt service for those construction bonds that have been and will be issued by the district for these projects. Do you have any questions or comments?
Only one comment here, that when we talked about putting this together a long time ago, the Butterfly House folks had to bring a huge chunk of money to the table in the many millions of dollars, and they did it. They privately fundraised, so a big portion of this project is not covered by tax dollars, but it's covered by philanthropy that the Butterfly House folks made happen. And Jerry helped make happen too with his group.
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Slavik. The last time I checked on the total, we were over $5 million that would not be suffered by taxes.
Yeah, they did a great job.
And if folks are wondering, in this particular district, the only property in the district is Missoula County.
Thanks for saying that, yes.
So we're somewhat painting ourselves for this district. I would go, did I screw anything up there, Andrew? Oh, okay. I would, without objection, go ahead and move that we adopt the Fairgrounds Special District budget. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I do have a question, and I'm not about any of this, the audio, is there, that echo, is this monitor, the sound on, is that? Okay, thank you.
Oh, now I hear it. Okay. Okay, the next one we have is the Sealy Refuge District budget.
Yes, if we could go to the next slide, Violet? So the Sealy Lake Refuge District budget is pretty simple this year. We aren't proposing any fee increases or an increase for assessments to the district. The proposed fees for the district rate pairs will remain at $180 per year. Out-of-district fees will remain the same at $4 for a 32-gallon trash bag or $18 per cubic foot yard, and the fees for all the other kinds of materials that they accept there will also remain the same.
So?
Oh, go ahead.
Just a quick question. So Amanda, I mean, it's really wonderful for these folks that they're not going to have to pay any more money, and I'm sure they'll be excited about that. My only concern is, are we going to be back next year or the year after with a really big jump because we didn't do small incremental moves forward just to keep up with inflation?
That was my question as well, the feathering or like, because last year we did a big jump and so.
Yeah, so what do you think on that?
So I would say in response to that particular question, there are a lot of moving kind of pieces in terms of the collections beyond just the district fees. The big one that's been a driver is the out-of-district fees have been higher than we have anticipated the last three years, and they've continued to grow. And the growth that we saw this past year will help us cover the expenses, the increases for the things that we're paying for this year.
That's a good answer.
And so before increasing everybody's fees more, if we've got enough income to, you know, stay even, there didn't seem to be a need for an increased assessment. The other part of that was the fee income that we saw last year was only for a portion of the fiscal year because the fees didn't become, weren't in place for the out-of-district and the special items until, I believe it was October 1st. So we only had three quarters of the year, and we actually had more collections than we even expected. So I think until we see that taper off, keeping the assessments where they were makes sense.
So in some kind of odd bizarre way, we want to say, bring your garbage to Sealy? Not exactly. Scott, that was a, yeah. Well, that is a very, that is a very good answer, though when we think about revenue from out of district and that the original cost here came about from a half-year, that all makes sense. So thanks for that answer.
Yes, and, you know, we have heard the message that we would prefer smaller increases that are tied to the expenses rather than large ones like we had to do last year, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
I would move that we approve the budget for the Sealy Refuge District.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, Violet, for fixing the audio. Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
Just working on the slides.
Is your microphone on? Cool. So we're here to open the preliminary budget hearing fiscal year 2023. In the budget presentation, I'll be talking about the overall budget appropriations, budget requests, tax impacts. For public comment, they may attend the meetings now and the next public meetings between now and the final adoption. They may also write in email, bcc@missoulacounty.us for private comments. The website is listed here as well for the budgets. Upcoming meeting, well, it's today, 25th. Oh, I'm sorry.
And not to derail, but can people comment on the, do we have a thing on Missoula County Voice that people can comment as well if they don't remember that email? Okay.
It's right at the top of the page.
At the top of the page. Missoula County Voice. Thanks.
And for some reason, the budget adoption date isn't in here. What is the budget?
It's going to be the September 8th public meeting.
Thank you. So just taking a look at the budget overview. This year, we, and the residents of Missoula County face some pretty serious challenges. Increasing CPI of 9.6% put us at the highest in the nation, in the mountain states, at CPI year over year.
CPI is Consumer Price Index.
Consumer Price Index, which is the measure of inflation. And these are ports of the components of CPI that make up that 9.6.
You said we're the highest in the nation?
We're in the nation, in the nation, the highest CPI for mountain states year after year, year over year. And here, I can show it to you on the graph. This is the mountain states. That's us.
Okay.
So year over year, the cost of gasoline has gone up 37%. Cost of food, 10.9%. Cost of automobiles, 12.7%. Cost of materials, 21%. Last year, asphalt was made from petroleum, spiked 20%, so a million-dollar road is now Natural gas, we had a 47% increase.
Andrew, I'm sorry, are you having problems hearing? Can you, can you really eat the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Maybe start over with this slide because this is a good one.
Yeah, this is financial challenges facing the residents due to CPI and inflation from year over year from '21 to '22. Cost of gasoline went up 37%. Cost of food, 10.9%. Cost of automobiles, 12.7%. Materials, 21%. Asphalt, which is made up petroleum, spiked 20%, increasing our cost of roads, a million-dollar road to $1,200,000. Natural gas, 47% increase. We saw a 4.3% increase in electricity in 2021, projected 3.9% increase in 2022. Cost of housing, 20% in 2021. Now, for '21, '22, approximately 20% increase. To live and provide services in the current environment depends on our capability to increase your income and revenue, wage and pressure, and employee retention has become major issues for the county in providing essential services to our residents. So here is the graph of the inflation index, the CPI index, excuse me, year over year. Invisible tax inflation, that's really taxation without legislation. Couple of quotes, readily quote Ronald Reagan, but you said inflation is as violent as any mugger, as frightening as any armed robber, and as deadly as a hitman. Maggie Thatcher said, "Inflation is the parent of unemployment and unseen thief of those who save." When the Fed's approved spending money on a program they don't have, they print more money, making dollars you and I have in our savings worth less, so our buying power continues to decrease.
Andrew, can I just say something about inflation just for a moment? Certainly correct, if the government puts out a whole lot of money, that will bring the value of money down. We are coming off of an absolutely unprecedented global pandemic, and during that pandemic, we saw a tremendous supply chain shortage in almost everything. So in places like the West where there was money, there was competition to buy items that we had never seen before, and the competition to buy things is the essence of inflation, and it drives prices up. This inflationary spike, I believe, was spurred in part by that supply chain shortage and that intense competition to buy stuff. If every object had been flowing in 2020 the way it had flowed in terms of production in 2018, I don't think we would have seen this. Saw factories all over the world close down. Meanwhile, people living in their houses in places like Missoula, Montana, having extreme demand for new cool stuff because they're sitting at home, and they couldn't get that stuff, so pushed prices up. And we are, I believe we are still reeling from that, even as we are reeling from the Fed putting money into the system.
I agree with you, Josh, and a similar situation happened in the housing industry. Housing, we should, mortgages should honestly be around 4% annually. We left the Fed Fund's rate at near zero for too many years. We should have started raising in the Obama era. What it did was people got into homes at a very low price where they were riding the edge. Inventory shrunk way down. Then the demand comes back to normal, there's no inventory, well, guess what? Inflation. So that's why we, that's part of the housing crisis in Missoula, in addition to people wanting to live here, of course. So I can talk a little bit about the property tax system in Montana. I believe it's broken. It's an archaic system and method of taxation. Made sense in Old England, people's wealth were measured by their castles, and they derived their income from the properties on their castles. Today, the person's ability to pay is not the wealth determined by their home, it's what they earn. The system, funding services at the local level are broken. We need real property tax reform. Property taxes cannot be the only source of income. Local governments rely on it to provide essential services to their residents. Reform based on a person's ability to pay or create other forms of revenue that provide a positive effect for Montana property taxpayers is what we need. Legislature needs to be, get the hell out of the way. Andrew, I think you're going to have to just swallow that mic a little bit more. I'm having some really trouble here.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, will this slideshow be available for folks if you want to read these slides?
Yeah, we'll have those on.
But we could get you a printed copy.
Sure.
Okay.
Did I say something?
Let him go through his presentation first and then we'll open it up for public comment, if that's okay. Great.
So the categories of county expenditures and personnel, which include wages and benefits. And this year, we had a 27 pay period, which also contributed to that. Operations include energy costs, fuel, material costs, contracted services. Capital outlay includes heavy equipment, computers, election stabilators, new structures, extending useful lives of capital assets. These are just some examples of the types of expenditures. The base budget is the budget that we need just to continue county operations, as is without any increase in service or whatever. The examples of personnel, we managed to keep that base budget at 7.36%, which I thought was excellent since inflation was running at about 9.6%. And the non-voted base budget is the budget that the commissioners have the control over. Those are the levies that they can actually adjust. The voted budgets are done, are created by the people. So examples of the personnel increases and for increases in the base budget, every 13 years, the county has a 27 pay period as opposed to 26, so we had to budget for an additional 27 pay period. Retain employees, Montana's, Missoula County's. County's implemented a pay plan for all non-union employees, provides methodology over the years to bring employees to market wages, and ensures that at least all county employees will have a living wage. 85% of the county employees are covered by collective bargaining agreements, negotiated contractual agreements, vary depending on the collective bargaining group you're in, and contribute to the increase. And there was also a 5% increase to health costs for the 855 full-time equivalent employees we have at the county. Continuing on with the non-budgeted increase, operations, energy, fuel, cost, increased cost of goods, building, construction, equipment, increased cost for contractual services, capital projects, continued rehabilitation, maintenance in facilities, extend their useful lives, safety improvements, safety railing at the detention center, equipment, emergency responder vehicles, public works vehicles, and equipment and construction. So the total preliminary non-voted budget increases, including the newly requested 2023 budgeted expenditures equal a 10.91% increase. So it's a base budget plus the requested budgets that you approved. There were several million you did not approve. Personnel, at a proposed 17% increase. Operations, 3% increase. Capital, 27% increase, primarily due to the construction of the fairgrounds. And 65% of the total expenditures are being funded by cash, rather than taxing.
I want to, if I can, just kind of put an exclamation mark on that. So we're seeing an increase in expenditures by 10.91%, but well over half of that is covered by one time, by our one-time expenses covered by cash that the county already has. This means there are no new taxes to cover those, that money. So that would bring this down to less than 5%.
We are still maintaining our minimum reserve levels. So total revenue has increased by 17.3%. Property taxes make up about 33.23% of that revenue pie. So it's a much smaller piece of the pie than you actually anticipate.
Andrew, would you mind just providing folks an example of what some of those other revenue sources are?
It's the intergovernmental revenues, it's fees for services, it's grants, it's corporate funds, CARES Act funding.
Pretty big right now.
Property tax increases with budget requests. The total 2023 property tax revenue was 66 million 611. The voted mill levy increases went up 14%. The permit medical increases decreased by 2%. Judgment levies increased by 110%. And non-voted mill levies increased by 10.6%. A fairly sizable jump in the voted levies. And in revenue other than property taxes, we have intergovernmental revenues that I always talked about earlier, federal, state, city reimbursements, grants, reimbursements, contractual agreements, licenses, permits, charges for services, document recording with the court recorder, subdivision review for county planning services, medical services at the health center and the PHC. And looking just in comparison, '21, '22, we have more in revenues '23 than we have '22. Part of that, a large part of that is because I'm doing two large bond issuances this year for the fairgrounds, well, one for the fairgrounds and then another one for the elections that are much smaller. Dead proceeds in there, transfers in. They should manage transfers out, but sometimes we have external transfers out as well. Entitlement share that went up slightly, and that was primarily because, well, we had a slight increase, 3% increase, but then HB 303, they replaced some lost property tax revenue that came from business equipment tax with entitlement share payments. So that went up for perhaps one year.
So I just wanted to try and do a definition of entitlement share for anybody who, that doesn't, people listening, can we say an entitlement share is the portion of money we get that the state is collecting, and we get that money because we did the work? So I'm thinking about things like motor vehicle titling, that we have to maintain an office with a whole bunch of nice folks in there, taking your money and getting your license plates and your documentations. This is the money, we get a slice of the money that comes from that in order to cover the cost of providing that service. I feel like the word entitlement is a terrible name for what this is. There's no entitlement here. This is a reimbursement for services provided, and a poor reimbursement at that, required, mandated, you have to do this. We do it, and we need to get some money for doing it. Folks won't work for free.
Absolutely correct. This is something that happened at the turn of the century, and there were all sorts of work and money being transferred each which way, and tried to straighten it out, and this is what they came up with.
It's a very tangible way that people see, for people to see that local government, county government is an extension of state government.
So, and we saw property taxes go up to 66 million expenditures. Personnel expenditures went up from 82 to 87 million. Operations from 62 to 73. Capital outlay from 5.8 to 16.5, that's the buildings. And then debt service associated with that, we have some transfers out as well.
I just want to note, again, I can't stop noting things, but some of these expenditures are entirely related to our COVID response and covered with ARPA money. And I don't think we'd see numbers this large without having had to attend to that pandemic and having that source of money available to do that attending.
You might wonder why we have revenues that are greater than expenses, and that is because we issued the debt, and we will not have spent it all down by the end of the year. So, we're only a portion of what you see on your property tax bill, and we'd like to show you how, see, how you can find out what you pay on your property tax bill, on to who. You need to go to the Missoula County website, go to Property Information System tab. It's right here, circled here. Click on that. You'll come up with this little box that'll ask you for your address, or name, or any kind of identification. I threw Strohmeyer in there in the name.
Did a random pick there?
Just a random pick. And I thought I'd take David, for instance. Second one, zoomed in on that. And if I had a larger screen, I could show his home, which is outlined here. And then go ahead and press Taxes. And there's this little part here that I put into the system in 2012, the pie charts, to give people understanding of where the money is actually going. This is a complete chart. It shows where all the slices of the pie are going. The county gets 21%. Did I cut off Cities down below?
The very bottom there.
Can you?
I don't see, can't see the percentage, but you can see the size of the pie.
Big blue slice.
It's got to be pretty close to 30%.
So, this is where the big slices are. And you drill down, see where the city collection is. And the city doesn't really identify where their general fund monies go. They've got a big slice, and then you have Park District and Road District that they collect assessments on. And Missoula, or special districts, Dave gets charged for Missoula Urban Transportation and the Water Quality District. You can see the amounts there for each. And then the state school distribution, divided into state high school equalization, state school foundation equalization, university villages, VOTAC, and elementary equalization. The amounts there. And then for local schools, we have a number of categories for elementary and adult education and high school education. And then here's the whole enchilada. This is every bit of tax on Dave's tax bill, along with the associated categories and costs. So it's an interesting exercise if you'd like to go through and really identify where your money's going to.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the, I couldn't find the county slice, which one? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Just mixed in there. So, yeah, I would highly encourage folks to take a look at their property, because just looking at this breakdown, I see county fair. I paid $11.28 in taxes to support the county fair, and I believe I probably got my money's worth in the several days I attended out there.
Just through the free admission. So departments submitted over 88 requests for additional funding, operations, capital funding. Commissioners have raised, declined to fund 2.6 billion in new spending. Remaining requests under consideration include 1.3 million in one-time cash, paid for prior year savings, $22,000 in requests requiring property tax dollars, $161,000 in requests for fund grants, fees, and other revenues. So more information about all these budget requests, we have them all online in great detail at this website. Andrew, maybe we could get a print copy for you?
Andrew, those aren't quite up yet, but they will be.
Oh, they will be, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you'd just like to come to the microphone, and then just turn it on, and then your name.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, I'm just a little guy. I've been a Missoula County resident.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Greg Souza.
Greg Souza, okay, thanks.
I've been a Missoula County resident for 45 years. The house I'm currently in, I bought it 30 years ago. I live out of town, and I specifically bought that house because I didn't need any services. I don't have paved road, no streetlights, curbs, sidewalks, nothing. I've got my own well, septic tank. And I'm always asked to sacrifice every time something goes up in price. As you guys know, when you go to the store and you buy your food, and you pay for your healthcare, everything, we are paying more and more and more. It's getting to the point of, why can't we hold the line? I understand what we just went through. We need to retain employees, we need to pay more for asphalt, we need to, I get it, as much as you guys get it. But at some point, if you can't afford it, you do without. I do. Like, as things go up, I have to cut out eating at restaurants. That's gone now. I don't drink beer at bars, that's gone. I don't go to concerts anymore, that's gone, because not just this property tax, but everything combined is what's shorting me. You know, my paycheck didn't go up. When you first get your paycheck, first of all, federal taxes come out, state taxes come out, social securities comes out. Then you better be at least putting 15% aside for your retirement account. That's a given. Then you've got your utilities. You know, I don't have to tell you, but this property tax increase, all I do is see every year it keeps going up and up and up and up. So I would just hope that we could hold it down to as little as possible. I'm not making any more money. I'm just spending more, and it's getting to the point of like, whenever something goes up, I have to cut back on something else. And basically, that's what I wanted to say. One other thing, why do we not have these meetings in the evening? In the daytime, most people work, and they can't get here. It's like, as you can see, we've got a couple people here, that's it. If you go to the Missoula City Council meetings about taxes, you know, there might be 250 people there where the meetings don't even get over until midnight for hours and hours. So is there any way, or can you tell me why we're doing this in the daytime, in the middle of the day when people are at work? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Greg. Could we change?
We're doing it this way because it's the way we've always done it, which is not a satisfactory answer.
So the, one of the differences between county government and city government, in city government, there's a legislative body. That's the city council. Those folks are not full-time employees of the city. They get a stipend, but they all have other jobs. So if those positions were professionalized, and I'm not saying that they should be, imagine that they earned a salary for being on city council, and they didn't have to have another job, they would probably do it during the day. But given that all those folks have jobs, have to work, they're accommodating those folks as much as they are of the citizens who want to come speak. So the other thing I can say is when we've dealt with decisions that were really controversial, this room's been packed. So I hear you, and I want to believe that, man, if we had this same meeting at night, there'd be a bunch of people here. But unfortunately, I think county government is pretty much under the radar, unless we're doing something that's very controversial for one specific neighborhood, and then they'll all come out. So that's what I got on that.
But point well taken.
Yeah, yeah, point totally well taken, and I think there's nothing that limits us from adjusting our meetings to better meet the public's needs. So I think it's something we ought to have a discussion about.
Well, like I said, most people work in the daytime, so, you know, they can't make it here. And then you've got people that might want to come in from Sealy Lake or Carbond or, you know, out, and they just can't make it in the daytime.
Yeah, we have, we have made this hybrid option available, so we have plenty of folks who don't live in town that are attending, they're just attending electronically.
Okay, do you want to open this?
I would move to open this hearing. And then how long?
Was there?
Couple weeks, is it? Tell me the date, say the date again. September 8th. So that means no decisions made today, but we won't make any decisions until September 8th. So people have plenty of opportunity to comment in person, or send an email, or leave a phone message. You can get to Missoula County Voice. It's a really easy way to do it. You don't have to remember much other than that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we actually need a, can the chair just open the public hearing?
Oh, we don't need a motion, sorry.
I don't know that we need an actual formal motion to open the hearing, unless there's some parlor carrying online.
Looking at the empty chair of John Hart, but.
I think for all of our other hearings, it's just open.
Okay, we declare this open.
There we go.
And then Greg, if you get Andrew's card, I'm speaking for him, but Andrew's very accessible, and he can talk through some of the things that you were asking about, some of those finer details on.
And one other point I want to add on this, yeah, those property taxes have gone up and up and up, and it's terrible. It makes me boiling mad. And one of the reasons, it's only but one, but it's a very real reason, is that we get between 2 and 4 million tourists every year in Missoula County. 2 million is what the university says, 4 million. 2 million is what the university says, 4 million is what Destination Missoula says, so that's why I'm, and I don't know for sure, but 2 to 4 million people. And those folks are here, they're making use of services, they're driving on the roads that our folks build, they're calling 911, or even if they don't call 911, just because they're here, we need to make sure there's enough 911 operators. They're interacting with people at every restaurant, bar, place of business they go to that are products of our local school system. They are using our services every which way, directly and indirectly, and not paying for them. So that means on any given day, the 120,000 people that are in Missoula County are paying for another 30,000 to 50,000 peoples who aren't paying. And we have to figure that out. We are subsidizing services for people who aren't paying and if those folks paid, I guarantee you, property taxes would be less. We go, if you were to go back in time, 30, 40 years, property taxes were way more reasonable and there was a big shift between then and now. Here's some of the big shifts. If we go back to 1983, we had four mills in the Missoula Valley that were big, big footprints, slick of the size of the footprint out at Smurfit Stone. Those mills covered like 30% of property taxes and residential home values were low. So, and we got no tourists. So a handful of industries that had big footprints and big revenues were able to carry the load. What residents carried was pretty doable and a house value was 30,000 bucks, so it was all fine. Well, as Andrew pointed out, the structure is broken. We have the same structure now and we have no big footprint industries, residential values are high, and we have 2 to 4 million tourists that aren't paying. That's the piece, that whole structure needs to change. And I totally hear what you're saying, like, I don't go out to eat, I don't buy beer and bars, like, cut the extra. If you, and I hope you can do this, if you have the time, take a look at this budget, tell us where the extra is. You can say, yep, don't pave that road. Yeah, we're just going to live without that road. We're going to live without that person who works in planning, we can get by without him. You can find the fat, we are totally open to cutting it, but this is a lean budget and we didn't have to provide services for people who didn't pay, it would be a lot smaller. But please do, sir, take a look at the budget and we're fully 100% open to suggestions.
Yeah, I'll do that for sure. I know materials have gone up. You see with the growth here, this is turning into another Bozeman.
Oh, yeah, sorry, come up to the microphone, sorry.
Okay, I didn't shut it off, okay. Yeah, you can see what we're turning into here. It's like another Bozeman. With the growth we've got here now, it's like you're going to need new stoplights down at Flynn Lane, you've got where the VA Center is on West Broadway, you're going to need all these everywhere. So all I can say is property taxes to me is just going to keep rising and rising and it just puts people out that, we hate to see the growth of people that have been here for many, many years. Growth doesn't make things better, makes things more expensive and more complicated. You know, you guys know that and it's just like more traffic, more everything. I was involved in around 1993, 94 of moving the utilities for the Reserve Street opening and the day they opened Reserve Street, it was already maxed out. You know, that was damn near 28 years ago. And it's like, where do you get around in this town now? It's just bumper to bumper and more this, more that, and it's just like, you know, I wish now, I would have lived a lot farther out, maybe even in a different county. I hate to see the growth, I hate to see these tax bills. I don't mind paying, I'm paying almost $100 a month right now just for school, for Frenchtown School District, $100 a month, just shy of that. And it's just like, without Stone Container, you know, they just left a mess here and they're out of here and now we've got pollution problems out there. They're not, you know, that new company, M2 Greens pays their bill whenever they figure it's, they pay it. Like you said, it's a broken system, but I don't know who fixes it, the legislature?
Yes.
Okay, and so when you talk to those people, it's like, that's an excellent question, we'll get back to you on that. Same thing, same thing. So I just thought I'd come down here today, I figured nothing's going to happen with what I'm telling you people, you already know, but it's just getting ridiculous. Whenever there's price raises, people have to sacrifice more and more. You know, I used to be, help with the local economy. I'd be down at the Mo Club eating burgers and beers and going to venues for concerts and stuff. That's over now, that's over. So I'm no longer contributing to the local economy. I come in and get groceries, I'm gone. So, thanks for listening to what I said, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to come.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have other business? Or did we?
Do you need to do the permissive medical?
Oh my goodness, I, sorry, thank you. Forgot about permissive medical levy.
Is that something we actually take action on today or?
Take action on until the final hearing.
So.
Do we have a presentation or?
Well, it was in, it was written in the charts.
It went down 2%?
Yeah, it went down a tiny bit.
Yes, I haven't been able to, thank you, sorry. Permissive medical levies, $4,335, decreased by 2%.
Okay, yep.
Hardly. It's a slight increase in the.
There's no other business and we're adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you. And then Allison, do you think you could get a printed copy for Greg or someone?
They're up.
Oh, you got a printed, awesome.
Get one right now.
Can you put Andrew's phone number and email, or if you don't email, can you put Andrew's phone number on it? And then Greg can sell it?